Good morning and welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Work Session Meeting for Thursday, June 7th, 2018, 8:00 AM. A recording device will be used during this meeting, and just a reminder, public comment for non-agenda items, Rules for Conduct of Public Meetings established by Resolution 2001-08. The time allows, the time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. And going forward, we will, because again, I want to remind everybody, this is a public meeting for the supervisors. Any questions need to be directed to the supervisors and not to staff. If a staff needs to answer a question, it will be directed by the supervisors, or if it's a question that we need to get back to, we will do so. We're going to start with the minutes of previous meetings for the Board of Supervisors, May 3rd, 2018, and we have an amendment to the approved minutes.
I thought the correspondence was that-
That was the one we amended?
Well, no, that there had been a request for amendment, but after Mary reviewed the tape in her notes, it indicated that the minutes were correct without the amendment.
Okay.
So we had a, I think we had a motion to approve the minutes, which was seconded, and then we tabled it because there was a question.
Okay.
But I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes of May 3rd, 2018, as they were submitted.
Okay, so I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May 3rd, 2018, I'm sorry, May 17th, 2018, Board of Supervisors meeting.
Motion to approve as submitted.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Planning Commission, May 2nd, 2018.
Motion to approve as submitted.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so let's backtrack. Sorry about that. I got off, I got off court here. So we will open up public comment for non-agenda items. Yep. He was up first, so let's-
Mike Wagner, Jeffress Road. Two things. I have a request, and I don't know, Matt's not here. Any chance I can get the speed location or the speed control device that was on Hopewell Road on Jeffress Road anytime soon? Increased traffic on 322 and Hopewell Road has now forced more people onto Jeffress Road, and I am getting an increased amount of traffic. Traffic speed limit is 25 on my road. People do not use 25. So I'm just requesting if it's possible we can get that device there. I'd be more than happy to let you use my property to put the sign up, or Jason's property, because he lives right across the street now. And you can ask Scott or Luke to call me, and I'd be more than happy to set it up with one of your officers.
Which address?
241, Jeffress Road.
I think that's actually handled by the Police Department, not by Public Works. Am I correct, Chief?
Yes.
If you could make that happen anytime soon-
Yeah, we'll put that on the list. I'll see what we've got coming up. We've got a lot of requests for it.
I'm sure you do. And the last thing is just a notification to the township. On June 28th, Brandywine Conservancy, myself and some people from the Juvenile Detention Center will be at the East Forest Station Program down off of 282. We will be doing a work session. We'll be removing old tubes, old plant material, staking material, and this is just a heads up for the township to know that we will be down there. It's my understanding, we don't need anything written or a resolution from you to do the work, but I want to make it known to Matt, I have not sent him an email yet, but I wanted to let you guys know that before I move forward with that.
Is that something you need volunteers for? Because that would be something we could also put-
No. Our volunteers are from the Juvenile Detention Center. This is part of their, I guess, payback for their loans, for their fines and so on and so forth. Community service. We are working on a pilot program with them to maybe hire them to do multiple areas. It's just something that hasn't been worked through yet.
Got it.
And it becomes a financial issue in the end, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, actually, help yourself to the table.
It won't be as long as usual. It's getting easier and easier.
So the little laser dot you see is the center, so if you just want to put whatever you place there right on the laser?
Well, Matt Canapeski from 425 Creek Road, and per our last conversation, Mr. Fisher, I figured I'd look into your suspicions about the Record of Deeds, maybe putting the unofficial copy on this site map. So you can see, this is a document produced by the Recorder of Deeds. This is page nine of nine. R codes on it. Now we see this one here, like we discussed before, the unofficial copy across it. We also see that the document was minimized, and we also see the font was changed on the details of the document, and then we can also see the highlighting was changed. So do you have any other ideas how this was created?
It's my understanding that the Recorder of Deeds microfiches the original documents, they may reduce them in size, but I don't think they even have the capability to change shading or anything else on the document, but the original, somebody has the original.
This is a Class II municipal township, right? And this is like, we're all practicing basically law here on a local level. So I can't keep going off of maybes, and I think this is a contract that's been abused and evidence has been fabricated. Now I repeatedly come to the board asking for answers, and I just keep getting, "I don't know, I don't know."
No.
Did you all receive an email from me?
The answer, you made a couple of statements, and I questioned the accuracy of those statements. However, you are correct that this is a contract. It is a contract between you and Aqua, and this board has no authority or jurisdiction to enforce that contract or interfere in any way with the contract. If you're not satisfied with the way they performed their requirements, you have recourse, but this board does not, cannot help you with that.
So you repeatedly say that. Besides the MS4 program, the NPDES, National Pollutant Discharge System, that's federally required, especially by municipalities, of 2,600 municipalities in Pennsylvania, East Brandywine is in fact required federally in these programs. And right off the EPA's website, not the DEP, the EPA, there is a strict guideline where it's, there is to be site inspections every seven days by an engineer. It was Matt McElhoun. The name was given to me. You told me earlier I can't address other people, but it was given to me by a township manager. Contact Matt McElhoun. Contact Matt McElhoun, he doesn't want to talk to me for some reason. Contact Cedarville, she doesn't want to talk to me for some reason. The three supervisors got all this in emailed, carbon copied to them. Now if I'm a taxpaying citizen of 11 years of this township, I have a contract with these people working on my site. I know for a fact that they're not doing things correctly, and now why can't I get my site reports?
And real quick, if I'm not mistaken, if it was an agreement between Aqua and Mr. Canapeski, is it a civil situation at this point?
Yes.
And- The Prothonitory Office, I keep saying the same thing. You can negate my personal issues with this project. The Prothonitory Office will be involved and will take care of it. You guys can look up the documents. This has to do with the federal law. And repeatedly say you're not involved, Mr. Fisher, what is Soudoe 350-48? Technical details to Soudoe Waterline.
We have jurisdiction, I know it's difficult for a lot of people to understand the multi-layers-
I'm pretty sharp. Why don't you explain it to me?
Why don't you seek legal counsel? Because I think legal counsel will be able to provide the response that you need.
Funny, I keep getting told to talk to lawyers. I'm talking to two right now who can't answer my questions. I need to go pay one.
No, we're answering your question, but you're not liking the answer we're providing, and so you're continuing to spin and ask the same question.
Okay, well, here's a transcript-
This township does not have jurisdiction over a private easement agreement. The federal statutes that you're talking about, the NPDS permits, the MS4 program, that has nothing to do with a private contract that you entered with Aqua. You have a civil recourse if you believe Aqua violated the terms of that easement. If you believe Aqua violated a federal law, you can seek legal recourse by getting a lawyer and having them guide you through the process. I am 100% convinced, if you get a lawyer, they will tell you that this board and this township has no jurisdiction to be able to assist you.
Off of the EPA's website directly, Section 4.1, it's required seven-day site inspections to be completed with photographs, with a description, with the name of the engineer, and given and produced to the builders, and the builders are required to have it on-site in their office at all times and for three years after the project is completed. And for you guys to repeatedly say you're not involved, I figured I'd do some reading last night. I ran through hundreds of pages of transcripts and found on page 87, this is Jim Sargent of Lamb and McLean, representing Metropolitan. And importantly, East Brandywine Township loses all tax revenue from project, and moreover, the developer has agreed to construct a sewage treatment plant up there, which East Brandywine Township needs to service in a adjacent community. So there's sewage revenue.
What's that from?
Chester County Court. Judge Jeffrey Fisher. Courtroom 8 or 6?
Jeffrey Summer. Is that not the injunction? Is that not the injunction on behalf of Metropolitan Development to access your property?
This was part of the special injunction asking. I also have the documents where they tried to put me in jail-
That's what I'm not really clear on.
For contempt of court. Fall sentence.
Project down because, I think.
They tried to put me in jail twice with fake pictures. It, do you, don't you wonder why I'm here after this project, after I got paid after all this? Isn't it suspicious why I'm still going through all this trouble if there's not something there? It's 11 years now, counting.
Okay, any other public comment for non-agenda items?
Are we, are you guys answering anything, or I just keep doing-
They answered it. We answered your questions. We don't have jurisdiction.
You're still going. You as an attorney, you're saying that you have no involvement with this.
That's correct.
That she's saying the township has no involvement with this.
So what do you, explain those transcripts. Are you involved with the sewage treatment plant? Did you make a deal with the developer?
I think she explained to you that you need to go get your own attorney and have that attorney advise you on how to proceed.
Did you make a deal with the developer for a water treatment plant, Mr. Fisher? Similar to the deal you made with the developer who took advantage of croppers, and where your actions invite litigations later on? We can't have our township fall because of several people's actions. Everybody will lose their job, everybody's property value will go down over two people who, it's not even very difficult. The project, you're going to get the tax money either way. You just got to do the job correctly.
Any other public comment for non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to old business. The cost history and regional survey results for municipal waste haulers.
That's me. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At our last meeting, we had a, just a brief discussion about the need to make a decision on a fifth and final contract year with Republic Services as our waste hauler. The board directed me to do some original research. That's included in your packet. Two pieces of research I did were a survey of surrounding communities and a tenure history of what we've paid for trash and recycling service collection, or at least the hauling portion of that service. The, if I could start with just the history, that's the piece of paper that is not stapled in your packet. It's a separate sheet there. You can see at the beginning of the contract with Republic Services, the first year was 2015. You could see an almost $100,000 decline in the cost of hauling, and you can see that in the third year, the end of the third year of 2017, we were paying less than we were paying in the last year of the previous contract. As far as the survey goes, I asked the Chester County Consortium of Municipal Managers to voluntarily participate in reporting what they're paying for hauling services. The contracts vary widely, but I did make an effort to try to get to apples to apples on what people were paying. Basically, I took the number of times a truck drives by a house by the annual contract rate and came up with, on average, it costs $1.25 for each visit. So I would expect that if we went to bid this fall, that's about the price we would get. We are paying significantly less than that now. So from a financial perspective, my advice to the board would be to renew for the fifth year. Something actually did come good out of the survey. West Brandywine indicated that they would be interested in, since their timeline matches ours, assuming we renew for this last year, doing a multi-municipal bid, and that may offset some of the costs that we will see because of China's new rules about taking recyclable materials. Our contract is written in such a way that the risk in the market for post-consumer recyclable materials, the risk is taken by the hauler. So we can expect, in general, even without inflation or just taking into effect, we have good contract right now, you'd expect it to be significantly higher if we rebid. So in an attempt to offset that, maybe more stops would keep the cost down. It's something to consider for next year.
And maybe you said this earlier, and I missed it. Who is West Brandywine using right now?
They are, you know, I don't know. That their contract ends at the end of 2019, which is the important detail, that we could consolidate and offer more stops to a hauler.
Right. If they were using this Republic, then we might have a problem. They say no need to, we're already doing them anyway. I was just curious.
Right. Well, all municipalities of the second class are required to bid out their haulers every five years.
Right.
So, yeah, I don't think, I don't think any hauler would be upset with the decision to rebid in 2019 were required by law to do so.
Okay.
So on this, you can, the only deadline we have is if we intend to not renew the contract for 2019, we need to provide Republic Services with 180 days notice. That works out to about June 5th of this year. So you have one more meeting to deliberate, if you're so inclined.
July 5th?
Yeah, July 5th. You're correct.
We passed June 5th.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have about 30 days to make a decision and notify Republic Services. So you may, as a board, make a decision tonight, or today, this morning, or at the next meeting.
Just so it's clear to me, you said we have to make, the way you presented it, it made it sound like if we do nothing, it automatically renews. I thought we had to do something affirmative to extend the contract for another year.
Yeah, I'm working from memory here. I believe it's we would need to notify them that we are not renewing within 180 days. Otherwise, it automatically renews.
Because my recollection was that that fifth year was an optional year, and we had to trigger that, so.
Correct. Both the fourth and fifth years are optional.
Yeah.
And last year at this time, we made a decision to renew for the fourth year.
For the fourth year, yeah. So I'd make a motion that we notify Republic that we intend to exercise the option for the fifth year.
Yeah, and especially if we can piggyback off of West Brandywine, possibly for next year, so I second.
That would be a future contract, yeah.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next agenda item is me as well. At the last meeting, we had a discussion about forming a budget committee, and I inquired of the board what they want to do procedurally to arrive at a 2019 draft budget for you to consider in November. And the direction to the board was to follow up with existing members, see if they'd be interested in serving again, and also to solicit new members. And I'm happy to say, that has been wildly successful. All four members from last year have agreed that they would be willing to re-serve, and we have gotten six additional interested parties. I guess the next question for the board is, do you need any additional materials besides this list in order to decide who to appoint?
So we've had as many as what on the Budget Committee in the past?
Well, the Budget Committee is always consisted of department heads and citizen members who are knowledgeable in finance. Certainly during my tenure here, it's never been more than four citizen members.
All right. I mean, me personally, I don't have a problem, the more the merrier with outside, more so than staff. I mean, I think it shows, you know, an earnest in our favor of allowing people that are, you know, not working for us to help us. So I, do you want to set a limit for the amount? I'm asking the board members, or do you want to-
I think, I agree with you that having people who are willing to go through this process and assist us is a huge asset. I would just be a little concerned about making the board too large-
Correct.
-because then it becomes cumbersome. So I would, I think we've had four in the past. I think adding another two or three people would not be a problem, but I wouldn't want to add 10 people to it, so.
So, so let's, do you want to-
Who is on the existing? Is there a list somewhere here? I see a couple of applications.
Yeah, so there's five applications in your packet, and then the members who were appointed last year were Robert Long, Bob Croft, Dave Kirkner, and Ken Ader.
So I don't know, I mean, maybe I'm wrong on this, but I don't know if we necessarily today have to vote on who. I think we should maybe read through these and get a little bit more associated, but maybe today, if nothing else, we can agree that we'll keep it to seven. And then that would include keeping or releasing pass because of maybe there's reasons unbeknownst us in the future, but let's just, I mean, are you guys okay with seven?
I think seven's a good number.
All right, so we'll go ahead on the record, and we'll get in a, we'll convert the Budget Committee to seven members.
Seven non-staff members.
Correct. And then the staff members would be-
Department heads.
It would be 11 people in the budget.
Well, and it doesn't necessarily, I mean, you might have a couple of meetings where you, people just-
That's been our experience.
Yeah, they don't show up anyway, and it's kind of like having a quorum. I mean, if you have seven, and realistically, I don't think all seven are going to be able to make it for every meeting. I think, you know.
And I, just to clarify, because this, the Budget Committee has functioned different than the Planning Commission or other entities, groups that the township appoints. It's not necessarily a vote by the committee, they make a recommendation, so-
Right.
They're recommending to us. The whole point of the Budget Committee is to sift through the requests from different departments, from different committees on the need for resources, and then make recommendations.
Okay. So I don't think we need a motion on this today for who, but, and I don't think we need a motion for how many, but let's just going forward state that for this year anyway, we'll go with seven members, non-staff, and four additional. All right.
I have a concern about these boards. I'm seeing here in my notes from that video that was taken off of the East Brandywine Township website, the one that took place on November 2nd, 2017, that I asked about. I see that it was actually the Soudoe Planning Commission who did the 350- water supply line draft. So I'm a little concerned that this board creates entities as like a fall guy. So they create a little board, and when the little board does something out of place of the law, they just say, "Oh, that was the board."
Well, ultimately, the supervisors-
That was the Planning Commission, not the board.
As Chairman, as Supervisor Fisher just said, the ultimate budget is approved by the supervisors, so.
He also said that they're not involved with the Soudoe Waterline at all. So if the Planning Commission is involved with this, I've never been introduced to the Planning Commission, and I've asked for the right to know and was requested, what were the details of the Soudoe Waterline 350-48?
All right.
Canapeski, that Planning Commission is set up pursuant to the state law.
I was told not to speak to anybody besides the supervisors at the beginning of this meeting, so if you could refrain and let the supervisors respond.
Well, she's our counsel.
You're not running the meeting.
She's our counsel.
You're not running the meeting. The chairman is, and you ask the legal question.
I'm just going by the rules. You told, they told me not to talk to the three supervisors.
Well, it was actually relating to staff, and she's our, she's our legal counsel.
He also told you that if he felt it was appropriate, he would refer it to staff or other people to handle the question.
And you said you had nothing to do with development, absolutely nothing, at the last meeting. And you also said that map was produced by the Record of Deeds, so what else?
You know, just because you want to continuously say things that are not accurate doesn't make them true, so that-
You can make up your own reality all you want, Mr. Fisher. The reality is what it is.
All right, so for today, Mr. Canapeski, I'm going to shut it down because your points have been heard, but again, we need to have a board meeting with constructive and fair. If you have points, again, you sent me an email the other day. I think I have two of the questions that you've asked me answered for that, that I'll be forwarding to you.
You asked me to put together a packet for the three supervisors, and you also told me to reach out to Cedarville. I reached out to Cedarville. The rep said that she spoke to Mr. Pierceall and her not to talk to me. Then I reached out to Mr. McElhoun and his supervisor, and the Philadelphia Office of Polonian Associates, and they also talked to Mr. Pierceall and were instructed not to talk to me. And I forward this all to all three of you in email.
Yep, and so as I said, with your, with your one email, I did reach out. I got two names for you, although be it, I don't believe it's going to help with the situation because, again, we're dealing with something that is a civil matter, but I can certainly pass on to you those two names that I do have for you.
And if they're not involved, I want to know what these details are to the waterline on my property. And if they're not involved, I want to know what this deal was with the Sewage Treatment Center. And if this company has already been federally convicted for fraud and SEPTA, which is on the books in 2008 and uses curriculum in Villanova, they're already been charged with fraud, but I'm sitting here with a mountain of evidence that I keep producing, and now you're making the deal with them to be in charge of SEPTA. So if they can't handle silt fence, you want them to be in control of handling waste.
You speaking of the Planning Commission?
Whoever's involved with Metropolitan Development. And I was told, I was told by Tim Towns two years ago that this was sold to Metropolitan Development.
I believe that's correct.
And through everything, I see that Tim Town, or South Down Homes, or Hillendale Properties, or Jack Low Associates, whatever title you want still owns. I still don't have my water taps. I've still never gotten my property restored. The topography is risking the Brandywine. When I got audited eight times in 11 years, I was threatened constantly with $30,000 a day fines for any sediment potentially entering the Brandywine. It's a historic site. I'll give, did you receive the pictures? Did you keep them?
Yes, yeah, I have, I have your packet.
Did you, through looking in them, did you find any sediment control in there?
I saw the super silt fence. I saw the one picture showed that it was breached, which is what I'm assuming the picture was alluding to.
When you see the orange silt fence, that's two and a half months after the directional bore, not when it started, but when it breached my property. So they worked for two months without sediment control. And then finally, my relationship with the Conservation Officer, Bobby Bonner. Bobby Bonner came by because he's a German Shepherd lover. I have a German Shepherd. He is a German Shepherd, blah, blah, blah. He noticed this thing was totally out of control. He went directly to developers. I called Scott the very next day. The Brandywine Conservancy had them install an orange silt fence that was completely off the property and completely ineffective. Then I contacted the Army Corps of Engineers because it still wasn't correct. Then you'll see a green silt fence that was installed that was also required to be removed that is still there right now. Like, you guys just keep saying, "I don't know, I don't know."
Well, it's not that the township doesn't necessarily know, it's the township can't do anything about the problem, because A, it's a civil issue, and B, it's also something that, you're absolutely right. I thought that maybe Cedarville could have something to do with it, but I was mistaken, and that's what I-
What about the person who's on staff, Jeff Klein or Keane?
Jeff Cantlin.
Yeah.
Yeah, he does residential, so.
He's the one who came to my house and did eight property audits. Well, he did seven out of eight of them. At the last time, once he became on staff, somebody else from Yorkies came. All from Bruce Rollings, who's- All from Bruce Rollings, who's on a Planning Commission. So, if they have the power to initiate property audits and harass a resident, they don't have the power to initiate an audit and protect a resident? Is this just a harassing campaign?
No, it's not, absolutely not. Well...
And then how do we explain this? How does one person drive by my house and get eight audits?
Okay, Mr. Kenneth Pesky, so for today, we're going to shut it down. Again, we'll pick it up at the next meeting, and we'll bring it up in a second. Going forward, for the traditions of, I'm sorry, did you finish your...
I have, I have one further question for you. You'd indicated that the board's preferences for seven citizen member panel for the budget, and we have ten applicants. Do you, I did not ask the original four to submit any information, on account of the fact they are already members, so there is no applications in your packet. Do you need any further information from any party to make a decision about appointing?
Might as well have everyone fill out an application so we can compare them all.
For staff, you're asking?
No, for, for the existing four members.
Oh, for the original four, yeah, 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 absolutely, because I don't think, I don't think it's, I think it's more of a year-to-year, I don't think it's a continuance, but yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
This is just an ad hoc committee, it's not in your code book, right?
Correct.
That's correct.
This is not something that's established in your code book.
Ad hoc and advisory.
Do you advertise the meetings of the committee?
We will, once they're known.
Thank you, so I make sure you do.
Yeah.
Okay, so going on to new business, discussion of the SPCA 2019 contact, contract renewal.
We received service agreement, what they call animal protective service agreement, from the Brandywine Valley SPCA. I believe it was May 31st, or May 30th, rather. The, reading through the contract, they basically are, in our opinion, and our being, several municipalities are trying to strong-arm the municipalities with putting information in to their benefit and not ours. I have circulated a suggestion to the other municipalities to approach the SPCA and discuss the contract before we sign it. I've had some municipalities who have indicated that their solicitor has suggested they not sign this contract at this time until we meet with the SPCA. I know Chief Cosi has contacted, what was it, the Executive Director, Mark?
Right, yes.
And I believe that the board has this contract, bless you, and we'd like to hold off on doing anything until this committee that's forming, it's Casey Lalanne from West Goshen, who had initiated a conversation last year with the SPCA, myself, Tom Seidenbuehl from West Callan, then I believe Mimi Gleason from West Whiteland. So, we're going to meet and discuss, through email, we've gotten several issues that various municipalities are concerned about, so we'd like to take that to the SPCA and see what we can do to negotiate a more reasonable contract with them. I know that last year, we spent, by memory, somewhere in the neighborhood of $7,900. Thus far to date, I think we were less than $1,000, and we're a little less than halfway through the year. Some of the concerns are that if we bring an animal in to the SPCA, we're going to get charged, it appears that we're going to get charged whether the animal's picked up or not. And then, if the animal is picked up, the owners are also being charged the same thing. So, we think that's unfair, that the Township should be paying for something that the resident pays for. So, there's just a lot of things in here that we think are inappropriate.
All right, so we'll table that, and then a discussion to reschedule or cancel the July 5th, 2018 work session, assuming because of the holiday.
Yes.
Yeah, it certainly...
And then also our, our deadline for Republic?
Not anymore.
We talked about that, though.
I, I will confess to not being impartial on this subject.
Hold on, is Missouri in the picture?
They're probably going to be away anyway.
No, but historically, at least for the last few years, the board has canceled their work session that's immediately around the Fourth of July holiday, so.
So, what would then, that would be Thursday, Friday's a little tough usually, but the next available day would then be, what would the Wednesday, the following Wednesday or Thursday be? Or just not have it?
Typically, we just have not had it.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that, me personally, but I don't know, you guys can...
I'm fine with that as well, unless there's something pressing that we need to...
And we can always advertise a special meeting if we have to have something pressing, so, okay. I'll make a motion that we, we cancel the July 5th work session meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Subdivision and zoning applications, traditions of America for West Brandywine Township.
At the Planning Commission meeting last night, I discussed this application. We were provided with the Chester County Planning Commission's review letter of the traditions of America, age-restricted active adult community, which is located on what I would refer to as the Baldurston Farm, which is located along Swineheart Road and Culbertson Run Road. It does join the Spring Knoll Development, which is Raleigh Drive, Berkeley Drive, Woster Drive, in East Brandywine Township. The, in 2004, when Bentley Homes presented the land development plan to West Brandywine, they were proposing a, an interconnect to the Ballba Cuddlesack at the end of Raleigh Drive. And residents in East Brandywine Township attended our meetings and the West Brandywine meetings to convince both bodies to not allow a full access, ingress and egress access to Raleigh Drive. And at the time, it was discussed that that would be an emergency access only for emergency vehicles and municipal vehicles. The emergency vehicles would use a siren activated gate, and the municipal vehicles, be it West Brandywine's vehicles for snow plowing or road maintenance, their trash trucks, which now have to go around down Culbertson Run Road to Horseshoe Pike and come in through East Brandywine to service the folks along with Drive, Raleigh Drive, that are in West Brandywine, Berkeley Drive, which is mostly in West Brandywine. They would have some type of garage door opener or something along those lines. So, the Planning Commission last night agreed that that should not, our recommendation should include that that not be a full access, that it be an emergency access, and also, what was the second point? That, oh, they wanted to know if a traffic study had been done by the developer, and I think it's early on in the process, for that to have been completed at this point in time. But I wanted to share that information and ask the board if they were willing to take a position on at least these two items. I've asked for a full copy of the plans and to be provided information as this project goes, goes forward from West Brandywine, but I haven't seen anything at this time.
As I recall, there was a considerable concern by the people along Raleigh Drive, which I think was very well placed, that if that was a full access, that would become a cut-through for this neighborhood for people to get the 322. And so, that's why we decided that we would not endorse that, and I would, I would wholeheartedly agree that it should be a, we should allow the connection, but it should be an emergency access only and not a full-service road.
One thing I forgot to say is, the difference in, the distance difference is seven tenths of a mile, because these folks, the folks in the back part of the development would have to go out on Swineheart Road, turn right on Culbertson Road, Culbertson Run Road, and come out at the D and B First Office of the Bank, and turn right onto Horseshoe Pike. That's seven tenths of a mile, and you know that people are going to take the shortest route.
I recognize that there are some significant fire and safety issues here because this is a fairly large development, which, as proposed, has basically one way in and out. So, certainly, if this was in our township, it would be a huge concern, but...
There's actually two means of ingress and egress.
Oh, is there?
Yeah, one to Culbertson Run Road, one to Swineheart Road.
No, I can't see that on this plan that I'm looking at. Oh, I see Swineheart is down here at the bottom. All right, well, that's, that makes it a lot better, and then, they really don't need a second, they don't need a third access to Raleigh on a regular basis.
Right. I'm presuming that, based on what I see here in the report, or the review from the county, that this, that that is purported to be a third access.
Well, the county is, number seven, paragraph seven on page five, the county is recommending or suggesting that Raleigh Drive be a full-service roadway connection to the site, but I...
Oh, you're right. And I think that's, it's one thing to have interconnections through developments, existing developments like we have, I know we get the complaints from folks in Hopewell about that being a cut-through between North Cuthbertsville Road and Hopewell Road. I think this in itself is different, where you're taking a quiet development street and turning it into a thoroughfare.
An arterial highway.
Yeah.
And right past the Township Park. And anybody who's been in Spatola Park on a Saturday or Sunday will know that that's a disaster waiting to happen because it's intensively used, there's enough traffic going in and out of there for the park now. I don't think we want another, how many homes is this?
Two hundred and seventy-six.
Age restricted, do they write?
Yes.
Yeah.
And his folks always drive really fast.
Yeah, you can't, yeah, so it would just hook me up in here.
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest that the board, as opposed to what the county Planning Commission is recommending, that you make sure you go on record as soon as you can with West Brandywine, so that, and maybe even it makes sense to send somebody from your Planning Commission when this is going to be actively presented to the West Brandywine Planning Commission, that I think, you know, a letter can easily be overlooked and ignored, but if somebody's actually making a statement on behalf of East Brandywine, that'd be very helpful.
Well, I think the...
The residents will too, I'm sure.
That would be my direction.
The plan as proposed has a, has it as an emergency access, which we don't have a prob, I don't have a problem with, but I, I think we have to just make sure that that doesn't get changed to a full service.
Those emergency access, how do those typically work? Are they key gated, where the fire department has a key to it, or in the township, or is it something?
It would be, as I explained briefly, my idea of that is a siren activated gate that would raise as the emergency vehicle approaches using its activated siren.
Yeah, and it gets, the builder will be responsible for putting that in.
Mm-hmm, and...
The HOA will be responsible for maintaining it.
Right. The municipal vehicles, trash vehicles, et cetera, they'd have a garage door type emitter that they'd pull up to the gate, hit the opener, and it would open the gate.
Okay.
And it stays open for a specified period of time.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think, Scott, I think in the past, when we've allowed these, they really have not been constructed with heavy-duty truck traffic in mind. They've usually been some kind of pavers or something else rather than a full road. So, I'm not sure that we would want to encourage trash trucks going over that accessway, but that's, and that's a totally separate issue.
Well, that was what was discussed the last round, and I believe it was 2004, was to make it, it wouldn't be a full road, it would be more like what we did in, at the end of Waring Drive, entering onto Butterworth Court, that it's a 16-foot wide driveway, which would allow emergency vehicles or trash trucks.
I guess if it has to be constructed well enough for a fire truck, a trash truck would have, it would accommodate a trash truck as well, but...
And we can also, I mean, if the builder's responsible for this, and it's not our township that, that needs this approval, we got to prove it for, for our side, but...
The, the problem that we have, thinking ahead, is the HOA is going to be responsible for maintaining this. If the trash truck beats it up, and then our fire company tries to go through that way and has a problem, it's ultimately our problem. So, that's, that's my concern.
No, I agree.
If I may chime in relative to trash collection, so for, even in a future state where we would have potentially a, a shared collector with West Brandywine, they still need to meter their tonnage separately. In the case of recycling, it's because we get grants based on the tons of recycling, and in the case of municipal waste, it's because each municipality pays its own tipping fees per ton. So, you would never have a truck design a route in such a way that it would include two townships at the same time.
That road maintained.
Oh, right up to there, this is the township.
Yeah, so that road is split between the two townships, yeah. I mean, I would think, my suggestion would be that you go on record now, that you don't want it to be a full access driveway, and that you request, as Scott said, that once the full development plans are submitted, that you're, you're given a set, and then you bring that as an agenda item to your Planning Commission to give recommendations on the details that you guys are talking about right now. What is it that you're willing to see happen? Is it simply just for fire access and police access, or are you willing to let trash trucks and this and that, so?
I, I mean, me personally, I prefer to keep it for emergency services only, that's my opinion.
That's my inclination as well, because you open it up for trash trucks, then they're going to want to put school buses through there, and it's like, I agree.
Okay.
So, do we need, did I make a motion, didn't I?
Yep, and I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll compose a letter to get started. I'm not sure when West Brandywine's Planning Commission meets, I'll try and find out, and...
I feel like they meet the fourth Thursday of the month, for some reason. I know they meet at the end of the month, but I might be getting confused with the board. I know they meet on Thursdays.
The board meets the second and fourth Thursdays, so I think the Planning Commission...
They'll meet the third, the third Thursday.
Okay, Scott, I guess this is you again, then, for PULTI?
Actually, it's more Kristen than me.
Do you, Luke, do you have it on the, oh, it's on here, okay. So, I printed out it, because I don't know, I know Jay was involved, and Kyle, you might have been, that there's many, many settlement agreements in place with PULTI for Applecross, both the original Applecross as well as Phase Four. So, I copied the relevant provisions, if you want to see this, but there's three documents, I know at your last meeting, you were presented with some documents as well, three documents, and I asked Panoni just to help, because I haven't been involved in Applecross. The first one in green, what's shown in green is a deed of dedication for additional right-of-way. So, when Applecross, the original Applecross was built, they had to widen Ballinger Road, which is the green, and then also Zin Road. So, this first deed is to accept the additional right-of-way for Ballinger Road and Zin Road. And the areas that are described in legal description is what's demarcated in green on your screen here. That's the first document. The second document is an easement agreement, and this is what's shown in yellow. So, the settlement agreement for Phase Four had requested that, or demanded, that PULTI offer a blanket easement over a portion of open space, so that in the future, if the Township wanted to, they could have future access connection for an extension of East Phil Road. So, that area, they're offering a blanket easement, they're not identifying on that parcel where specifically you would have a right-of-way of 37 feet for an extension, but they're saying it, this document, this easement agreement, says in the future, if you decide to do an... if you decide to do an extension, you can place it anywhere within that parcel H twenty-one B. So that's the document that's marked in yellow. And then third document is, um, again, the settlement agreement for Phase Four, contemplated that at some future time, if this track, and what is this track called? The McCoslin?
McCoslin Track.
McCoslin Track, which Phase Four abuts, if in the future the McCoslin Track were to be developed, the settlement agreement required that there be a, a road connection in an area that's identified as Road C. So this is a declaration of an offer of dedication, it's not, you're not accepting it yet, it's a perpetual offer. And the reason why it's important to have this document be accepted now is that typically when there's an offer of dedication, that will expire after a period of twenty-one years. So I think there needs to be a something of record that says that's a perpetual offer and that twenty-one year period doesn't expire. So in, you know, if and when a future board has a development plan from McCoslin and they'd like to see a road connection into using this Road C area into Applecross, again, sort of as we just talked about for the West Brandywine site, you know, the details of which are not being worked out, this is just memorializing what the settlement agreement required them to do. It's not obligating you, it's not obligating any future board to ever actually accept it, it's just, it's making sure that that condition that was set forth in the settlement agreement doesn't go away after any period of time. So those are the three documents. I don't have the originals yet, I do have signed copies from Pulte, and Allison Zar indicated that she'll give me the originals that we can then have, assuming you all accept these, have you sign them in, they'll be recorded.
Okay.
Any questions?
The, the only thing I was, I'm, I've been back there numerous times, I'm just trying to think, is this access easement, is this, this is all wetlands, isn't it?
Lot of it is, yes. I think the wetlands are delineated by the hatch in here. So yes, getting through the wetlands would be an issue, and that's why it's essentially a floating easement. So it, it's not typically like all these other easements, you have a specific meets and bounds description. In this case, they're saying, over this open space, we can put the road through and we can work out the details of where it would be at some future point in time.
If and when you decide to go forward with the extension and you get design plans, and at that time you would nail down specifically where the thirty-seven foot wide right of way would be.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the easements.
Three different documents, a deed of dedication for additional right of way, an easement agreement, and a perpetual offer.
Do you wanna do them separately, or should we do them all? All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve the declaration of perpetual offer of dedication of Road C right of way, Applecross Country Club, the easement agreement between Pulte Homes and East Brandywine Township, and the deed of dedication for additional right of way along Zin Road and Bolinger Road.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, ordinance task force, we have none. Ordinance resolution for consideration, resolution eighteen of twenty eighteen, approve the subdivision of Brandywine Village Drive Traffic Signal Application.
This was submitted to me May twenty-fourth after our last meeting. Pulte Homes and Mapleview need to install equipment in the existing Brandywine Village Traffic Signal to have them coordinate. What they were originally proposing was a GPS time clock, which is not permitted by our, um, traffic signal specifications. I made that known to, um, McMahon some time ago when we met at Pendot, and Andy Heinrich, when I sent him this document, uh, made that comment to, to Jamie Couch from McMahon, again, that they need to, um, interconnect the two with fiber op- excuse me, fiber optic cable, and then there's communication equipment between the two. So that's what this resolution's all about. It has nothing to do with, um, the plans for Giant, it simply interconnects the existing, um, cabinet at, located at Brandywine Village Drive with the proposed cabinet at, um, Bolinger and three twenty-two.
Cabinet, what, cabinet?
Control cabinet.
Oh, wow, wow.
Sorry. The big silver things that are on the corners. But that, the design is for, uh, fiber optic cable, so that, um, basically what happens is the equipment will do traffic counts, uh, on a continual basis and prov- intercommunicate that information between the two control cabinets, so that the, um, signals can work in conjunction with one another, so that you don't stop at one and then stop at the next one. If there's sufficient flow of traffic, it will keep traffic moving on, uh, Horseshoe Pike and limit or hold traffic on the side roads until, um, the side roads have sufficient traffic to stop traffic on three twenty-two.
So if there's a lot of cars coming out of the shopping center, it would automatically trigger and, okay.
But make sure they're both, it basically synchronizes the two lights, so...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'll make a motion, we adopt resolution eighteen of two thousand and eighteen.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, public comment on agenda items?
The only comment I would have is can I get approval from the board to the liaison with West Brandywine's planning mission with the help of Scott to settle some of the issues with the new development?
I would love it. Me personally.
We also have some issues too with the trail program, the west, it's gonna be a combination. Dale's been on the east to west, um, program with, with Luke and myself, so he's up, up to speed on this, and we'd like to get that part of the program. So if Scott can put me in this letter, I'd be more than happy to take all that responsibility.
Any other?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
As long as Bruce is cool with it.
Okay, yeah. Uh, any other public comment for, for agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on.
By one question.
Oh, yeah.
Is there anything we can do for Mr. Kanapeski?
So...
We're gonna lose a lot of time and energy to be spent hearing the same old stuff we could turn to you over and over again. Is there any way we can help the guy out?
So, so my thought was...
I don't want, I don't know what he wants.
Well, so, so...
And you can tell him exactly what he doesn't wanna hear.
But I don't know what he wants, I'm not sure what he wants. But help with what? The line's already been installed.
I understand he wants them to be the police, he doesn't wanna spend the time and energy to do that.
He wants to, he wants the township, my interpretation is he wants the township to penalize Aqua.
Yes, that's on your job.
And, and we...
We don't have legal authority to.
Maybe provide him with the documents that he wants for the site visits, I guess.
Can we throw him a bone? Is there anything we can do for him?
We've looked into that, Mike. We, we've actually looked into that and we've spent a lot of effort trying to determine if there's anything the township illegally can do, and I think the, the answer is no.
It's gonna be back, it's gonna be back.
And that's why I think if he hears it from his own lawyer, that the, his own lawyer will, I think, and I mean this sincerely, tell him there's nothing the township illegally has the right to do to help you.
But the lawyer's gonna give him the path forward, whether he chooses to take it or not is up to him. But I, I, I'm not familiar with the injunction proceedings that, that he was citing in this transcript. I don't know if he was represented during that or not.
Please, please, share picking information to throw out there, try to get a response. But my, my feeling is, I hate to say wasted, but you guys are wasting our time with this project. Can you just shut it down and tell him just to keep moving forward and maybe not even let him come in? Because again, we're seeing the same thing over and over and over.
The public mean you can't.
Well, he's, he's, he's entitled to come here, I mean...
I think all you can do is, is limit his time, you can't say you can't show up or you can't...
And, and I want everybody to feel as though, you know, if a gripe isn't resolved at one meeting, they can certainly come back the second and, and rehash it. The problem is, in fairness to everybody, to keeping a time limit, and, and I take the blame for, for not pursuing that option earlier, but I mean, we have people complaining that they, they wanted to get on an agenda and they couldn't because time got taken on, on, on this. But, um, I do have answers for him, I started to allude to that today, uh, for, for contacts, and I'll, and I'll certainly forward that email to him, and then, um, um, you know, hopefully build the bridge, just brick by brick.
Appreciate that.
I did get video from, um, Schlock, who is the, uh, site contractor for Metropolitan, that clearly proves that there was silt sock in place.
I think, I think from what I understood, there was silt sock, but it was breached, and, and I don't know, uh, if that's more of an engineering mistake, or if it was just a hundred year storm came through that particular, um, you know... Yeah.
But that, but that's not an uncommon situation, where you put the silt fence up, it gets breached, it's a maintenance issue, they have to come out and reinstall it.
And if, and if that's what it's, what it's...
It's what the conservation district's for, to, to do those inspections.
Right, but the conservation district, I, I exchanged emails with, uh, Jim Demchak, who was the, uh, conservation officer for that project, and he was told by his staff or his boss to stay off the property because of Mr. Kanapeski's behavior. Apparently he's been problematic before. His, his contact with Bob Bonney, um, that's also false because I had that checked through Ray Benarchik, who is Bob's, um, uh, senior officer, and there was no report that Bob Bonney inspected or stopped there. Whether he did or not, I don't know, Bob's been off. Uh, he injured his right knee and basically tore all the ligaments, all the tendons muscle away from it, uh, last, you know, it was sometime last fall, and he's still, actually it was before that, um, and his rehabilitation's not going well, so, uh, I haven't been able to contact him because I don't have a cell phone number for him, but I doubt any of this occurred. And the fact is that I did ask Matt McAlune and Schlock to visit the site when Mr. Kanapeski called. He called twice, I told him both times that it's not our responsibility, it's DEP's, because they issued the permits, the section one oh five permits and the, uh, I think it's a GP two permit. And I've been trying to get ahold of, um, Abdal Nasani from DEP, because he's the, uh, DEP officer for this area. He lives in Upper Euclid Township on, um, Kaiser Drive.
But the one thing I'm confused about, isn't the water line one hundred percent completely installed?
It is, it was installed in two thousand seventeen.
So that's where I'm still not getting, I, I understand he thinks that erosion controls were not in place, and he was looking for somebody to assist with making sure they were in place. But now that the line's done, what else could the township do at this point in time?
They didn't, they didn't restore his property back.
Okay.
Per the agreement.
Okay.
And he's, I think he's under the impression that that should be, since that development is in, within our township, that we have jurisdiction to have our zoning officer go out, code enforcement.
Understand.
Enforce that agreement because that's part of the land development project.
All right, so why...
And I think it is confusing because I, now I'm understanding it.
I think that's, I believe, that's what I guess.
And I think part of it is because there were federal permits involved for the water line, that wasn't something that your land development process looked at or analyzed.
Why don't we do this? Let's get a letter to Mr. Kanapeski stating the township would like to address all of his issues as best we can and, and direct him to the proper person and, and responsible for each issue, and that way we can possibly, you know, sometimes it's hard to explain your, your frustrations, you know, when there's eight of them. So let's get them all in writing and we'll send a letter out, either Scott or Luke, if one of you guys could send a letter out asking the board of supervisors, request a list of the, um, of his questions and concerns, and we will try to address them one-on-one, um, and, and see if we can get some closure to it this way.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and what I would wanna say is, so, we hear what you're saying, but what right now is it that you are asking the township to do?
Right, because some of the things are over, unfortunately.
If Jason is correct, and, and what he wants at this point in time is to have restoration done to the property, that's not something that the township can require them to do. That's a private matter between him and Aqua, uh, because we were not, we're not involved in it. That's, that comes back, um, the easement agreement, I'm assuming, 'cause I haven't read it, uh, says that they can put it through, but then they have to restore the property. So he, he has a private cause of action against Aqua to force the restoration of the property.
And, and is the restoration by the builder or by Aqua?
Well, I don't think, I, I think, I don't think Metropolitan has the easement, I think Aqua does, but I'd have to look at it to see.
No, I think it's between, I think it is with the developer.
It is with Metropolitan?
So, I mean, that's, that's as simple as if, if this is a, a accurate, um, conundrum that we're under, then we could ask him, uh, ask the builder to make it right, and we can't force him, but we could ask him if, if there's true, a true problem there.
Well, if Jason is correct, it's more about a restoration problem, is there any faith that the township can put behind him to get them to...
That's what I, yeah, that's what I was just alluding to.
Can make an ask, but we don't have the legal authority to enforce the terms of that easement. But we definitely can make an ask, there's no doubt about that.
And I'm sure Metropolitan is just gonna pass that ask along to Aqua, because Metropolitan holds, holds the easement because they want the water, but it was Aqua that did all the construction, or Aqua subcontractor did all the construction.
Whatever you can do for the guy, please.
Yeah, can we get that out, um, uh, and over to Kristen, uh, prior to the next meeting? So at least he has it be, let's just say a week to ten days before the next meeting, so he can, he can, um, try and get some of those questions, um, probably for the next meeting?
We'll try and have it out today.
Yeah, well, Chris, yeah, I would ask, yeah, right, over to Kristen.
Yeah, that's fine, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, um, any notices?
Uh, the, the board may wanna note that we'll be meeting this evening and a continuation of the Rouse Chamberlain Application for Conditional Use hearing, um, seven o'clock.
What time?
Seven p.m.
Okay.
Uh, do I have a, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.